Order Thursday, July 17 at seven o'clock. Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Here.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Here.
Secretary O'Lord?
She had a work-related incident, she told me to tell everybody.
Ed Cordino?
Here.
Philip Downmire?
Here.
David McMahon?
Here.
Is she into the pie?
She's here though, Deborah Purnia. Yes, she's here.
She's so into the pie.
.......................................
Visitors? To the agenda.
Don't all front forward at once.
Could you strike from minutes that I was in the pie?
Give us IPV.
We're working it.
Thank you. Student representatives? No one done at the time? Approval of previous minutes?
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 12, 2014 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
And we have, let's have a vote for review discussion, June 17 special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 17, 2014 Board of Education special meeting as submitted.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Personnel resignations?
Make a motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Jean Gresham, grade four teacher at TVES, effective at the end of the 2013-2014 school year.
I'll second.
That goes to Phil. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Tara Jackson, special education teacher at North Bramford Intermediate School, effective at the end of the 2013-2014 school year.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Mr. Jerry Cronk, social studies teacher at North Bramford High School. Oh, and at North Bramford Intermediate School?
Um, now, now high school, high school.
Did I see it wrong?
It should be Jeffrey.
Jeffrey. Even have my glasses on, I'm gonna start all over. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the resignation of Mr. Jeffrey Cronk, social studies teacher at North Bramford High School, effective at the end of 2013-2014 school year.
I'll second that.
Any discussion please? Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Tamara Mokas, science teacher at North Bramford High School, effective at the end of the 2013-2014 school year.
Second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I wish you weren't going. She couldn't teach you.
I wanna just update you, this Mokas has accepted the K-12 coordinators position for the Norwalk School District. She will be overseeing your entire science program for multiple schools. She's good and you're lucky to have her.
Roll call please.
Chair Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
And I'd like to make one more, a motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Liberty Page, chemistry teacher at North Bramford High School, effective July 14, 2014.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Okay, appointments? We refer to the superintendent's report, or either hire.
Okay, we have a handout, she's gonna give it to us left. We'll start passing those around to you and then by the time I finish my two pieces, we'll be there. I have something under recognition donation, there's a communication from State Department head, there's tablet C, recognizing that we have, within the scope of the Bureau of Special Ed student file process, we have demonstrated full compliance with IDBA. And I actually recall mentioning that this past year we've been on the floor responding with the State Department, then Special Ed Department, Education Department. So this is great news, that we are in compliance and this is a great deal of work on behalf of the Special Ed Department. So I'd like to congratulate them for this first phase. We'll have the next two updates probably in August, early at the beginning of next school year, to continue on with it, so this is good news. We do have a field trip request, exhibit D, as you are aware, we've been talking about some of the trips that our music program is going to endeavor onto. This trip is to Washington DC. It is for April 16 through the 19th of April, and with approximately 70 students coming. Hopefully we'll be in our new band uniforms by then, and they'll be traveling in style, but we will need your support for that trip as it is out of state.
I'll make a motion to approve the field trip request from the North Bramford High School Music Department, including approximately 70 students for April 16, 2015 through April 19, 2015 to Washington DC.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
And I'd also like to recognize and thank the board for supporting the purchase of the band uniforms. As you are aware, the students raised just over $15,000 on their own through private donations, and then the board supported the completion, upwards of $8,000 to complete that. So those are uniforms that will last for many, many years and bring a level of professionalism. So I want to thank the Board of Education and recognize the Music Department for their efforts, so thank you. Now we'll move on to the filling to hire. There's a list in front of you of approximately 13 positions, I believe. We are in the process of interviewing and screening applications, and I'll go through it. Joel Harrison made a trade too opening, we had over 200 applications. Dr. Welch and his team will home screen a number of applicants and then start the live interviews in the next seven to 10 days. We do with the resignation, this month we posted the biology position, day one had 12 applications, which is a good sign. They'll run their course, and they should be closing towards the end of next week, so that people have a healthy pool for interviews. Chemistry has also been posted, I'll keep you apprised of how many applications we have. We finalized our guidance interviews and Mr. Steffler has made a recommendation to Central Office, we're hoping to assign a guidance counselor tomorrow. Our school psychologist has been filled by Christine Carney, a 60-year graduate student. She's coming in in step one, she's a graduate of University of Connecticut. Social Studies has been completed, Mr. Steffler has made a recommendation, hoping to sign that candidate tomorrow, and that person would be onboard and ready to start. We have completed Language Arts at the high school, Chelsea Dodds comes in with a master second step, graduate of University of Connecticut. Our seventh, eighth grade intermediate, Language Arts position, Audrey Janowitz, master of two from Assumption College, Bill Rayhounds. Our MBIS math seven, James Newfeld, master's third step from Quinbyak University. MBIS Special Education, Angela Veluski, master's fourth step from Sacred Harbor University.
That's actually the three.
The one, what?
That's the three.
Oh, that's right, thank you, Don. This position, this special ed position was eliminated due to budget cuts, and when we had the resignation of a special ed teacher, we were able to call her back and keep her employed. And she was going to be displaced by somebody from TVES, and actually she, her high school position is displaced by somebody from TVES, but she's not gonna move into the open position at MBIS because of terrorist resignation. So we were able to move her back in.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Don. At MBIS, Dana Zambaletti, master's first step from Quinbyak University. And finally, our school counselor, Erin Stevens, master's four at the intermediate school of University of Delaware. So the administrators have been busy, this is quite a process, as you are aware. When we get into the number of applicants that we are receiving, especially at the elementary school level to screen, I'd like to thank Don, Tracy Wu, who's been very active sitting in on the interviews, the initial rounds, prior to recommending to my office for the final interview. We did complete our associate principal screening interview process. I wanna thank Chairperson Patenoster for sitting in for a few hours to interview candidates, and we are hoping to come to a decision tomorrow morning, as soon as I'm aware of an informed agreement. That's that for the first round.
Already these new hires, local students have been local students from North Bramford.
Let's see, I don't believe so.
No.
Yeah.
But one did her student teaching here.
With student teacher, I understand.
We had a student teacher, we had someone who did, two candidates who did one-year positions here, that were able to then transfer to permanent positions.
Our social studies person student taught here.
Our social studies person student taught here and was, put in the interim here, and also did long-term stuff in here.
Under professional development, I'm gonna have this group speak to some of the things that are ongoing and what the focus will be next year as we move forward. Keeping the strategic plan in place, as you are all aware, decision-making revolves around that, and some of the focus and what we're doing with Common Core, so this group, if you wanna update the board.
Our professional development goals will be similar to what they are this year, and that's really propelled through state in their initiatives. It'll become core state standards, next generation testing, which is smarter balance testing for the most part. There will also be their push to be job-invented professional development, which means they prefer not sending multiple people out. They would rather professional development be done in-house by people who go out and are trained, and then we come back and train our staff, so that they can actually implement the things that we're talking about throughout the year. Rather than go get trained and then think about, oh, where I would use this, they prefer that it's done. We have a great vehicle for doing this, it's our professional learning communities, our PLCs. So our staff is really already accustomed to learning this way, and we really did a great job of being able to capitalize on the expertise in the district and send trainers out to get training and come back. Some of the things that we've been able to participate in are on that second page, page four. And we have over 75 professional development opportunities that our teachers have taken advantage of. They're everything from walkthroughs that we do in teams of teachers in each building, to physical management training, curriculum writing is part of Aces Consortium. We work with nationally renowned experts, including Nancy Boiles. Common Core coaching workshops, we are, we have quite a few people that have been trained by the Yale Center for British Arts. Part of our staff was actually in the documentary about the program, which I believe Marcy was able to attend.
I did attend.
So we really have been proud of what we've been able to do. We are actually in the process of negotiating this grant with Aces that should provide us additional, approximately 10 to 15 days of training that we've earned through participation in things that will be in the class to us. So these are things that we're working on for next year, and of course, again, we'll continue with Common Core state standards and implementing them to the fullest extent, and having our teachers develop more and more lessons and become more comfortable with those standards. Smarter Balance will be implemented in an operational format versus a field study format, which is what was done this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I just comment on the last meeting here?
Sure.
I think though that it was Saturday morning and they had the preview of the documentary, and it was really, really nice. It was very eye-opening, because visual literacy is something that's been talked about. Dr. Wolf had brought it to the district years and years and years ago, and I never really understood it, and this was amazing. Watching this documentary was amazing, watching these group of students that they started with, and then going through the visual literacy, and what they were able to bring out from these students. It was just a whole different way of teaching. They had somebody there from, I wouldn't say it was West Hartford, a gentleman, I think he was a, I think he was a science teacher, might have been math, but I think he was a science teacher from West Hartford who was implementing this in his class. He said he's able to have other teachers in his high school bring it into their classrooms as well. It was really, really, really amazing. It really was, and North Bramford had a good showing there, which is nice to see.
And I'd like to extend thanks to Patty Darrow, who really spearheads that. Not only does she do it for our district, but she actually trains people from other districts through Yale, and every year goes to Washington DC to show some of the work that we're doing nationally.
She's a wonderful job.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to committee reports. Negotiations.
I'm attending the work with the asking groups, and also we had a joint meeting a week or so ago with the town, because the defined benefit pension plan is also up as of the end of, well, actually as of June 30 of 2014. So that's gonna be a combined effort, because that covers all of the town and board employees who are in that plan.
Thank you, Don.
Since we look, that reminds me, two meetings ago I was appointed to the pension committee, but I had to be approved by the town council. I haven't heard anything from the town council yet, I don't know if I've taken it up yet or not. Want to find out?
I wanna say I did, but I'm not 100%.
I wanna say, I thought the minutes, I read the minutes, I thought they did.
Right, I thought they did.
Thought they did, we can find out, though, thanks for bringing the floor attention.
Cause there'll be anything coming up.
I thought it was two months ago.
Yeah, I think they, I think they did do it fairly quickly.
They did, it was sworn in.
I might say if he was appointed, he should have received the letter from the secretary of the.
Yeah, then I should, Lisa, you should have, from Lisa. From Lisa, you should have.
Well, from the top of the council.
But also you would be sworn in for that, isn't that something, sworn in for that?
Yeah, yeah.
So Lisa.
You have to get it sworn in, yes.
The twentieth?
No, you have to get sworn in.
For that pension.
Cause there's a meeting in August, right, Don?
Yeah, there is a meeting in August, so we'll have to, we'll check into that tomorrow.
That's a luncheon meeting, make sure you go to that, that's good.
I will.
Budget and operations, are you all there, Phil, sorry? You all going down? Sorry.
I'm so tired.
Okay, budget and operations.
The list of proposed dates, under tab E, if you want to take a look at those.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed 2014-2015 budget and operations subcommittee meeting date as submitted. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I looked at him and I did make sure that we changed that June one, for Don's recommendation, to change the June one to a week earlier, it's not gonna be right before our board meeting, because that's, there's some decisions.
Just gives us a little bit of time.
Would you change it to June 9?
Change it to June 9, so it's not.
No, this is, it is June 9. Normally that's not the day of the board meeting, the rest are all the day of the board meeting.
So it's all settled for the town, correct? Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Okay, we'll skip to exhibit, we got line and transfers. Do you want to stay with the calendars? Improve those and revise those, like, that's a point. All right, Don, why don't you take it down?
Well, we, at the budget and operations committee meeting, we discussed the line item transfers, so this is a request to have a motion to approve the list as submitted.
I'd like to move to approve the list of the period line item transfers as submitted. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, that $85,000 number though is going to change based on the bill that we have, I mean, correct?
I mean, it always, as I said, I capture everything I can up until now.
Up until now, I understand.
But there will always be some adjustments, either via the audit or, you know.
I just monitored for the records, so that it was, it was clear that that is not the end, no. That was all.
All right, Lou, I would like to make notice to the public that even though we have to spend $43,000 unnecessarily for an arbitration that the town council made us do, we still, we still be turning money to the town, is that all right?
Yes.
Thank you.
It would be nice if they would give us that $43,000 back.
And then I would like to just take it, Don, you do a wonderful job with the budgeting and the estimation of numbers, it's very hard to do over a year in advance, and based upon simple math, sort of simple math. Our budget is coming, you know, we take some criticism at times for giving money back, that we overbudget, that we shouldn't be doing that. We're within one-third of a percent, our budget is within one-third of a percent, giving 80,000, there about 75,000 to 70,000. That's budgeting 99.66% aggregate.
And as we talked about a little bit at the budget subcommittee meeting, we did also have the Title I grant, which was unanticipated. Had it not been for that, there was something we would not have been able to do, and we probably would have given less money back.
Thank you.
Well, thanks.
Thank you, Don, for your pleasure.
Thanks. You are amazing.
Okay.
Sure you don't do that. We're moving on to curriculum instruction and teaching planning.
We can do a review of that, please.
What are the roll calls are?
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Now, we'll be along with curriculum instruction and strategic planning subcommittee meeting as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Okay, under exhibit G, the highlights are these changes to the administrative evaluation program. Have been highlighted, we will need to take action this evening to move forward, state and to revise that plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised North Bramford Public Schools Administrator Evaluation Program effective for the 2014-2015 school year. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Similar to the administrative evaluation plan, we also have to update and make changes to the teacher's evaluation plan. So it will be a. No motion, we don't have to do that.
We'll do that next month after you have a chance to review it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead of myself. We'll leave that to you in August.
Right, thank you. Pension, no meeting. Policy.
I just wanna make one comment on policy. There were a number of statutory changes in June of 2014 that will drive some policy revisions, and so we have scheduled a meeting date, I forget exactly what date it's on. Yeah, okay. In August, early August, to begin the update process for those things that are, and there's actually quite a long list. I think there's 12 or 13 items that may have to be incorporated into policies, I'm not sure they're all different policies.
Thank you. Bill, the committee.
Okay, we had a pretty good meeting. Few things, apparently they found a broken pipe over by the music room, which they believe is accounting for the water coming in. Since they fixed it, there hasn't been any water, but we certainly won't know until, you know, the wet season comes about. Some of the flashing on the building needs to be replaced. They also believe there was an issue with the gutter in the front, and I started, we're hoping that, as Bill explained it, the water was backing up, going down the hollow frame of the front doors and windows, and going under the slot. We're hoping that that's the problem. If that's the problem, it's an easy fix, we've already allocated $60,000 in capital improvement for that. So if that's what the fix is, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
And we're hoping that's also gonna be enough to change that tile, which that tile turned out not to be ceramic tile or porcelain, it's some type of a composite. So we're gonna have to try to get the same product again, put in there. Let's see, the high school work project is probably about halfway now, it's looking pretty good. There's some extra work orders that came in, one for, we had, they budgeted about $9,000 to re-point the chimney, but it's shot, so they're gonna replace the chimney. And that's gonna be an additional $4,800 and some odd dollars. So we appropriated, we approved to not exceed $5,500 on that cost. We also have another extra work order from there for wood blocking for the fascia. They figured around $38,000, and we thought that was a little high, so we put in a, we agreed to go up to $33,000 not to exceed $33,000. And we also have $2,305.97 coming back for that bathroom at Stanley Field.
Very nice.
And I think that's about it.
Good report, thank you.
You're the right person for this meeting.
You sounded like a contractor, so.
Yeah. Right person for this meeting.
Thanks for going there, Deb. Okay, moving on to communications.
We canceled the meeting in total agreement with the council, because Bill and Don had had a council meeting, what they really wanted was updates on the projects. And thank you, Don and Bill, for going to the council meeting and updating. That's really all that's on the agenda, so we canceled the meeting.
I have one more thing on the committee. The TVES group, we should probably be looking at architects around September, October, November, and we wanted to go up the bid, probably around January, February, we'd probably get the best rates at that time. So that's something that we should start working on.
Well, do we have clearance from the council for that?
Well, it's coming from permanent project, there's members in the council there, I'm sure.
Yeah, we were talking about it, so, you know, just, it would be a good idea so that next summer we could have that on our back.
I believe the issue, or that's not, was not an issue, the step that was holding it up, the, I mean, it's had something to do with the bonding form or something like that, was I think that's now been taken care of, so I think it can move ahead.
The council rep is, Ms. Angelina, the roll call please.
New business. Okay. Visitors and press. Go to the board. I would like to say everything. June was a great month, I was very happy with both graduations, thank you, Mr. Davis, for inviting me to the middle school, and Mr. Steffler for the high school, I thoroughly enjoyed both, the National Honor Society. So June was a very good month for my first time around. So June was a very good month for my first time around. I really appreciated it and I want to thank everybody for, uh, inviting me to all their events.
That's it.
Thank you for being present. All the board members.
I, I'd like to thank Louie. I thought he gave a really nice speech of graduation.
Just very good.
He did a really good job.
Thanks.
You cleaned up nice and your speeches were good and...
I tell you, it's tough following those guys, though. It really is.
Yeah, students were pretty impressive today.
Well, thank you, Don, and to the board for, uh, being present at the various functions and events at the end of the year. It means a great deal. I know how busy everyone is with your careers and families, but, um, students recognize it, the staff recognizes it, so thank you. My office.
Any else? All right, you guys are pretty good. I have to say that, so I don't mind representing you guys as a chairperson because you guys are good, even Debbie.
My chair.
Uh, the next board meeting is Thursday, August 21st, 2014.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?[1796.33]